For political leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy, roll call.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweigl.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeHore.
Here. Motion for the consent agenda tonight?
So moved.
Or discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweigl.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes, alright. Public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Number A, 2122, the resolution at 115 Riverside.
Good evening, Mayor, see Council. As you're aware, the 20-day period has passed. Required by term where a resolution must sit prior to any sale of property. I have met with Copper Rock twice last week. They have made a modification to their proposal. And I'm gonna have them come up and explain what they're looking to do, what their changes are. So Greg Taylor, Matthew Hill from Copper Rock are here. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Dean Rosengold.
So if you want to come up.
Do you have a back screen?
No, the back screen's down.
How's everybody doing? Matthew Hall, Copper Rock here again. We actually started these plan changes even prior to the last meeting. And kind of dialing it in, our design, and I'll kind of run through it. Right now, we're looking at first floor, retail or commercial use, possibly a restaurant or something like that as well. And then we've, it's right now four stories. We're working, we've had meetings with both Mike and Andy Moore analyzing certain things. So we're really trying to keep that top of the roof deck on the fourth floor to that 40 feet. So it's a fine right use. So what we're looking at on the middle floors is one-bedroom units. So it would be 12 one-bedroom units on the middle three-floor floors. And we like that for a couple of reasons. But primarily parking-wise, just having one beds as opposed to two and really reducing that need. And then there is a rooftop deck on the top that will be part of the first level. So if there's a restaurant use, that would be kind of part of that. So that way, the community members can all utilize that deck and the view and be really cool up there. Been working, we're very talented architects and we did some research on historical light and power buildings. And that's kind of where the design came from, a lot of heavy masonry and having that historic look to it. And trying to fit in with surrounding buildings. And we're liking the size and scale of how it looks, pretty pleased with the design. But you know, we certainly heard the comments from last time. And we're already, like I said, we're making on some of those adjustments. But we're excited about the project. We're ready to continue the diligence and hit the ground running right away. And we think it'd be a really great project for the community. It would bring the owners or the tenants living there and then also having that commercial retail space to kind of help continue the walkability and the business on that side of Flaver.
Yeah. Are they gonna scroll down for the rundown?
Yeah, you can scroll down.
Scroll down the...
Yeah.
So we implemented the masonry in the area. And we have an exposed steel structure stair that kind of tied in some of the area architecture. And just to piggyback what Matthew said, I just want everyone to know we're working hard to listen to the comments. We originally proposed six stories. We brought that down to the community betterment. We want a restaurant and then that viewing deck is also for the public's use. So we've worked hard to really modify it based on the original design.
One other thing that, sorry, Greg Taylor with Copper Rock. One other thing that we worked hard with Mike and Andy on is also getting a count on the parking in that area. And we did a radius study and I think we came to the conclusion there's 155 existing parking spaces within a 400-foot radius of that site, plus the possibility of perhaps adding some more if we look at that even more closely. And as my colleagues mentioned, you know, we obviously are listening to everything that we're hearing in the community, trying to incorporate that into a responsible and cost-effective and economically viable project as well. And as my colleagues mentioned, we're very happy with the progress we've made. So we appreciate the input that we've been receiving and look forward to moving forward on this and ask for your support. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
I was looking at my notes before I came down here. And I was under the impression when we were listening to all the presentations that your ability to do this project was not dependent on any monies from the city. Did I misunderstand something there?
I think what we mentioned during the RMP process is that we were going to be pursuing all the normal economic incentives that are available for a site like this. And that would include cooperating with the city on whatever might be available. We haven't determined yet what's available. That will happen after the design process is completed and we dig in deeper on the incentive front. But we did not go on record and say that we would be doing it without any, without pursuing any incentives or any cooperation with the city.
One thing we did want to show too is the footprint of the building is very small. And we did some massing models underneath that I'd like everyone to see that. Kind of put the building in scale with everything else as far as square footage of building, as far as facial square footage, if you will. So hopefully that kind of gives a good depiction of, you know, this isn't some crazy massive huge building in comparison with the surrounding area.
Alright, any other questions for them? Mike?
Just a couple of things, just so you know. We've counted 400 feet. That's the standard that they have, that anyone would have to use for a downtown building in terms of downtown project. And we counted within that 400 radius, 147 spaces with the ability to add eight to them. At 155, so that's where they're getting.
Are they all on that side of the river?
Yes, they're all within 400 feet of the building. So every, if you can scroll back up, I can show you. Yeah, there's a circle of 400 foot. That's the area we use. So for example, like the Broadway lot across the street, I believe I counted three spaces they could use there. So it's most, you know, the majority is obviously the lot closest to them. But there's on-street parking with over 400 feet that would be eligible.
Alright.
That's not including the potential, what is it, 24 on that. Scroll down a few pages. Other neighboring rivers as well. You could get seven on Chatham. You could, if with the 400-foot radius, you could get seven on Chatham. I'm sorry, eight. And those were counted as well, 47.
Alright, so now we'll open it up for public comment. Five minutes. When you come up to the podium, we just need your name and address for the record.
Perry Beecham, 924 Riverside Drive. A quick question. When you're talking about those parking spots, which is on the street, which we have, are you, is the city going to waive ordinances? That overnight parking? Because again, when you're talking about...
Yeah, my experience, what I've done in my former community, we had this issue come up. And what we did was maybe some type of pass they have to put to use the municipal parking lots during the night. But you would, yeah, I would still, I don't look at restricting any or allowing on-street parking during the winter months.
Right, so I'm just saying, so when you're giving that, those numbers, those numbers are skewed a little bit because if they're residents, they're parking there 20, you know, not all the time, but 24/7. So they can't use any on-street parking. They can only use what's in the lots, correct?
No, they could use whatever they wanted, just during the hours of 2 and 6, they'd have to be off the street.
Right, so if you're, so it's an apartment, where are you putting them?
In a downtown, you could put them, you have to put them within that 400 feet. They have, you know, that's what the requirements. Andy, can you kind of explain what they would have to meet when they get to that?
So the requirement in the zoning ordinance, so typically with most land uses, there is a standard that says you have to provide, you know, one space per every 300 or 400 or 1,000 square feet of building. It has to be on the same property as the use. In the downtown, because we recognize that there are lots of buildings that occupy the entire lot, there's an exception in the zoning ordinance that says in the C2, which is your downtown, in the C2 and mixed-use districts, you can count any public spots on or off-street within 400 feet toward that required minimum. So in this case, I don't know what the exact required minimum would be, but they would likely meet that with the public spots that are available within 400 feet of the property.
I think what's...
But currently, the parking lot that's available close to that, there's only four overnight parking spots available in that lot. You can't, in the winter, I know we can park on the streets in the summer, but in the winter, snowplowing and all that kind of stuff, you can't, you can't park on the streets 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the morning. So if you have, so I'm just saying, in that 400 feet, there's legitimately, right now, as the city has set up, there's only four parking places available.
Overnight.
Overnight.
Yeah, I think you would have to allow for more. There's 37 spaces in that municipal lot. So I think you'd probably, if they did wish to move that, they probably would want to reconsider that.
Yes.
So what I, that was just a question I have about the parking. But I do want to clarify, being on the Lowell Light and Power Board, the ledger had wrote some things about the meeting two weeks ago that was here. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So Lowell Light and Power has no use for that, we haven't, and Charlie can speak to this in a moment. We have no use for that building and we have no future use that we're looking at for that building. So that's why Lowell Light and Power is saying we don't need that. So it's, we can't own or sell property, so it's up to the city to do that. And we've just informed the city that we don't need that for our operations. It kind of, in the ledger, it kind of talked about how we needed that, the sale of that to, for our operations, for, to keep the rates down, et cetera. And that's not quite was the meaning of what we were talking about. We don't need that. It will not, it should not affect the rates one way or another. If we, if the property sells, we'll in all likelihood take that investment and put it in our cash reserves. So I just, and Charlie West, the manager, can probably specify clearer than what I am. Thank you.
Thanks, Perry.
Sharon Ellison, 407 North Division. I haven't been to the other meetings, but I've been reading about what's going on here. I'm relieved to see at least it's four stories and not six stories. But I still think we're missing the mark. I was looking at the master plan and I looked at some of the reasons why people moved to Lowell. The number one thing that people listed was a small-town character. And that, I don't think this building necessarily fits in with the small-town character. They rated in a community input survey that they, 77.6% agreed that Lowell has a strong historical character and buildings should be preserved. And development is acceptable if we keep our small-town character. I don't really see a four-story building blocking the riverfront as small-town character. I don't know. I just don't understand that. In the goals and objectives in the master plan for the city, it says Lowell will foster an image as a historic community featuring turn-of-the-century architecture, rich cultural history, and important natural features such as the Grand and Flat Rivers. The image of Lowell emphasizes the heritage of the Flat and Grand Rivers. Measures will be undertaken to improve access and views to the rivers from downtown and other areas of the city and township, including demolition of view-blocking buildings and structures, building a pass, construction of overlooks and others. That's in the master plan. That's what people are expecting. Future land use, you know, appropriate land use in the downtowns include retail, commercial. They should be located on a second story or above in the downtown area with retail or office uses on the first floor. That's the future land use from our master plan. This doesn't fit that. I think you're missing the mark. I think aesthetically, as someone who's grown up here, I don't know if you lived here your whole life, but I have, I think it'd be a shame to see a building that tall. I'd say maybe three stories? That's pushing it. But four, six, I mean, it's ridiculous. That's not the character of the town. But I feel towers are a neat structure. Does it belong in Lowell? No. Does this belong there? I question it. I mean, it's gonna be like looking at that old school again, way across the street. I think it's gonna block the view. I don't think it's aesthetically pleasing. I don't think it fits in with the character of Lowell. And I'm sorry that you didn't give a local person who's done a lot of work in town, I'm talking about Greg Canfield. He's done work that fits in with the character of this town. Why you didn't give him consideration when he was willing to invest his money again in the city and do something that fits here in our area? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Barker, 901 North Jefferson Street. Just looking at the dollars and cents and what's in it for us, the residents, not Copper Rock, Greg Canfield, anybody else. If you took the $100,000 from Copper Rock and that goes to Lowell Light and Power, compare that with the $130,000 from Taj Hall or the $150,000 from Greg Canfield, how much does that equate to the individual household rate holders of Lowell Light and Power?
Sorry, I can address that. And I think what our chairman was getting at is ultimately, the sale of that will go to support our cash reserves, but would not result in a decrease in electric rates. Failing to receive the money wouldn't result in an increase. Overall, the sale price is not a motivating factor for Lowell Light and Power. We are, as Chairman Beecham said, we have no operational use for the property for some time. So we're requesting that the city make the choices that they feel are in the best interest of the city. So we have informed the city that ultimately there will be no material impact from financial standpoint to the electric rate payers through the sale of this property.
Again, ultimately, I would like to know how much $100,000 generates per household receiving electricity, rate holder, and $130,000 and $150,000? And for how long?
Well, we have approximately 3,100 customers. So it's $32 a person. But as I said...
For $100,000?
For the $100,000.
How about $150,000?
Say, my predecessor is better. I was gonna say, that's what funds were. $48, so, but I had mentioned, it's, you know, the way that the rate structures work is those funds would not go to supporting the rates. They'd ultimately go to supporting cash reserves, which...
Ultimately go to supporting our rates that we pay.
Yes, I was gonna say, there's...
There's a difference here.
Yes.
My point is, if you receive $150,000 versus $100,000, us as citizens and as rate holders, there's a $25 difference there. Did the math right, probably did. Looked close. And my other point is, you would get $150,000 now versus $100,000. I don't know about you, but $50,000 in the bank seems to me to make a lot more sense. And you can make it so that they have to do it now. I mean, that's just part of the rules of the game. Secondarily, if you had, if you took the Copper Rock, they are still talking about grants and tax abatements. Guess what? It still comes out of my pocket eventually. And I just don't think that's fair to the residents. We don't have to do that. We don't need to do that. So those two points, let alone the whole idea of the height variances, let alone the parking problems. I mean, there's obviously parking problems. There's just no way around that. So those are my about concerns. Thank you.
Nicole Smith, 1098 Sound Split Drive. As a business owner in the downtown area, I really appreciate Copper Rock's proposal and what they're looking to do. That space has been empty for so long, not driving any traffic, anything happening in our area. And when you think of the long-term viability of Lowell and the people who want to live here and be a part of this community, affordable housing is a thing that we desperately need more of. There is not enough people who can afford to live in Lowell because there's not enough spaces for them to live. And having access to more one-bedroom apartments can really increase our availability to young professionals who want to live in Lowell because it's a great place to live if you're commuting in either direction. So I don't know what y'all are thinking for your prices, but I do hope you keep in mind, you know, affordability. We have a huge condo site on this side of the river that's not being used to its full space because of price, kind of pricing people out. But I do really appreciate your proposal, the well thought on each of it, and listening to the community and the feedback to make it to fit into more of our aesthetic. We have amazing buildings downtown that are at, you know, the three, four-story height. And I don't think that it would make any detriment to people's view. And having more people on the river, being able to experience our town is something that benefits us all when we look long-term at things like spending money in businesses, having taxes that are paid here, having more people excited about being in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, if I may?
Yeah. Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that Matthew mentioned it, but the height of that building as shown is 40 feet. Fits within all the ordinances currently within the city of Lowell. So that design is meant to meet not only the master plan, but also the height requirements per the existing ordinance. Correct?
In C2, the maximum height is 40 feet, so it would satisfy that criteria.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andy.
You mean, Mayor, material modification where it was originally 42 feet, but with the change in material, it was able to get it at 40?
Mark Grisman, 525 North Hudson. Couple of questions on this. Four stories is story higher than any of the other buildings we have here. Do our fire department have the equipment to get up that high? And then two, you're saying 400 feet from their property for parking? Does that include the funeral home parking lot? Which is owned by them?
Funeral.
It's only, it's only for public parking.
Okay, so you've got the lot there, so you let them on the street. And like Perry said, with the snow removal, so they moved their tires into the parking lot. What if they don't move them out right away in the mornings? Now the businesses don't have the parking available because these people are parked in the lot for the snow removal. And what other parking areas are within 400 feet besides that lot and the street?
That would be the largest parking structure.
Okay, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's, you got, it's just too cramped. That's all I hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody? Hold up, Perry.
Susan Stevens, 610 North Jefferson. I'm here, I've heard a lot of complaint about parking and we have parking issues. A potential solution to alleviate some of that issue is to, I don't know if you can require or if you can only request, all business owners and employees who work along Main Street to not park on Main Street and to park on Chatham and especially during Christmas and festivals and busier times of year. And to not park right up behind the building, park out on the street next to Lowell Light and Power and further down the street. Not park right behind the building here, park in the back of the lots. I drive up and down Main Street and I see the same, every single day, the same cars parked in front of businesses on Main Street. Those people work there. Those people are taking a customer spot for themselves. If they're concerned about their businesses, having customers be able to park, then let's start by asking them to move further away and park further away instead of expecting their customers. Years ago, I worked at Hudson's. I know it's not Hudson's anymore, that's how long ago it was. We were required to park against the outer ring road at Woodland Mall in a certain section away from the building so that we walked and the customers did not. At Christmas, we had to park in the lot on the other side of the ring road. When I worked at Amway, just a regular day, I could walk a quarter of a mile to my parking spot because the spots in front of the building are for guests and visitors, not for employees. We need to think of the greater good here for the businesses and we need to either request or start enforcing business owners and their employees not parking in the prime parking spots. I'm sorry if you have to walk farther. I've done it, you'll survive. You're asking your customers to do the same.
We have to make sure everybody else gets a turn before we can let you go. I just have a quick question for Andy Moore. Does anybody else have a public comment on Copper Rock?
Joel Miller, 7551 Riverside Drive. I belong to Flaver Delery and Framing. And one of, I was with a group of people the other night who were, I'll say 95% of them were born and raised here from my age to 92 years old. And they knew that I had come to the council meeting, so they were asking me questions like, where do they think people are going to park? Why are they doing this? And the more we talked, they also wanted to know why the city would turn down offers of more money and why they would turn down offers for people who had concrete plans, would not be requesting grant money, assistance, whatever you call it, from the city, and businesses that would not really change the footprint of the building. There were 15 of us and it wasn't, it was a meeting, it was a social event. But there was a good 20-minute conversation about this. And so I just wanted to ask, because I had the same questions. I don't understand why you take a building or somebody that needs to modify the building when you had people that were willing to use the business, use the building without majorly changing the footprint? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Parker, 901 North Jefferson, and I agree that parking is the issue, that's the thing, and it's like parking at the dog. But I don't think, first of all, mathematically, that one-bedroom apartments in a building like that on the river are going to be affordable housing. It ain't gonna, I just can't see that that's gonna be the way it's gonna be. But I am also tired, as a resident, of businesses. Lowell is only so big, there's only so many places that people can come in and build and develop. But I'm also tired of places that are coming in and are overstepping the size, and then expecting to use the municipal lots to handle their people, their property, their whatever. They come in and want to build, which is great, but they're overstepping and expecting to use things that they're not paying for. You're cashing out at 100,000 when you've turned down 130 and 150. I'm going on record to saying I have never met Greg Campbell enough with you eight years. I have never met him. I talked to him once, and a passing comment is he won't buy on his bike, one time in eight years. So, I'm not necessarily on his side. But if you walk up and down the street and see the things that he's done for the city and the citizens, and wants to do with that small little piece of land, I don't understand this. I don't understand your thinking.
Thanks.
I'm Beryl Burdges. I am the unearned ability reaver at 215 West Main Street. My parking, my building is backed up to the parking lot. I will say, when you're talking parking, please keep in mind, I hope you didn't count our parking spaces, because we have privately owned land, two spots for ours. Doc Reagan owns the building beside us with North Star. He also has at least two or three parking spots, so I hope you didn't count those five spots, because we do use those. When I look at the building there, it's beautiful, and you guys have done a nice job, it's pretty. I see five stories. I see four residential, three residential, and a business one. I also see a fifth story on top, it does extend, I don't know if that height is 40 feet, clear to the top, it looks like there's a cap on the top that you're putting space on the top.
That's the elevator shaft to the cap.
I suppose that would be above 40 feet high. I think every bit of it should stay below 40 feet. Every building in this town is three stories or less, and I realize they're historic, so they're probably higher than a traditional three-story building, but that's just by two cents. We've talked a lot about parking. I also live above my business. I watch that parking lot. There's more problems than just parking. Currently, there are two dumpsters. I'm not sure how many, how many 12 units, how many dumpsters does it take for 12 units? I do know there's two dumpsters there right now. This week, I watched the dump truck come and dump those dumpsters. To get to the dumpsters, they drive over about six parking spaces, because this is a full-size truck with a dump on the front. He goes around to the dumpster, he backs up within inches of the existing line shack that I don't believe goes all the way to the property line. He then pulls forward, dumps the dumpster. He then, which I found really interesting, because I didn't expect this, he then does one of two things. He either backs the entire length of the riverside until he gets to the far end of Lowell Light and Power, and then goes out Broadway, passing about 12 spots. Dump trucks, dumpster trucks backing don't seem like a good thing to me. If he doesn't do that, the other option that he has is to go the wrong way down Riverside Drive. I watched it happen, okay? It happens every week. I'm not making it up. I don't know how he's gonna maneuver with 15 cars sitting there. The other thing about those two dumpsters, one of them is recyclable, one of them is a trash dumpster. If you've ever walked down Riverside Drive, and this would have been before one of our recent, one of the recent residence restaurants left, it reeked, it smells. Where are we gonna put trash for 12 people that's gonna be held for a week? And I'm assuming, I'm assuming they're like me, and they clean out their refrigerator every now and then. Keep that in mind. The other thing that hasn't been discussed very much, Perry mentioned it, snow removal. Snow removal is the responsibility of the city. The city cleans the streets and our parking lot between 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. Usually, there are two parks, there are two cars parked in the lot at that time. There are two residential cars parked in either a handicap spot or a residential, or the overnight parking, if there's snow, both of them are overnight parking. I don't know how you clean around 15 cars parked in a parking lot and expect my customers to be able to get to their stores. We, if our, if our car is there in the overnight parking, it is, it is snowed in with a bank of snow all the way around it. The other thing, the snow, what's done with the city's snow is it's parked in the northwest, or it's dumped in the northwest corner of the parking lot. So, in the winter, we're gonna lose at least two to three parking spots from the pile of snow. It doesn't stay there all winter, it is later removed and then hauled out to the fairgrounds or someplace. But it does sit there for a couple of weeks until the pile gets quite large. The other spots are drifted over in the northeast corner. We lose at least one, if maybe not two, spots because of the drift and the cars sitting there. That eastern spot is unusable because there's a drift. So, it'd be interesting to know how the city's gonna plow around 15 to 20 cars when this, in the winter. We just talked, they can't park on the street, because you gotta clean the street, so now they're gonna park in parking lot. Someone mentioned, why don't we park away from our buildings? They, parking on Main Street is two-hour parking. If there's owners parking on Main Street, give them a ticket. You know, I mean, that's, that should have been taken care of. I own the building, and I do feel like I should be able to park fairly close to my building, I'd live there also. I usually park in the back of the parking lot. No, I'm probably not gonna walk two or three blocks to my house. What else? Oh, for the last couple of weeks, I've been walking out in the parking lot. It's like, okay, well, how is this parking lot really used? What do we really see out here? I go to post office every day at 4:00. Every day at 4:00, there are six remaining parking spots. That's with nobody living in a four or five-story building across the way. At 7:00, I come home from my, my job that I work in Grand, I come home at 7:00, and I try to find a parking spot for my home. Often, there are four or five spots left. I don't know where you're gonna put parking for 12 units. High-density housing is not a good idea here. Finally, I think about diversity. Leah, you especially talk about diversity in our town, and I appreciate that. We want diversity. I totally agree with you. We need diversity. We need people of all walks of life in our city. We want them walking on our streets and shopping in our stores, but let's think about the people living in our proposed apartments. Yes, you're right. 17, 14, 12, whatever people are living there, it's gonna be the same people in those apartments every day, every night. Are they gonna support my business? Sure, they're gonna come two or three times a year. That's gonna be great, I love that. Could we make it something else, where some more people would come to our city? But those 12 people, or 15, or however many, will be the only ones enjoying that prominent piece of land. It will be the same people clogging our parking lot. Will they, will they support our shops? Like I said, yes, a couple of times a year. I have one final question, and I would like to know, let's say you choose not to pass this tonight. Will Copper Rock get to reposition? Will they get to re-change their plans one more time to get your approval? If that's the case, I think the other four bidders should have the same opportunity. The four bidders, or five bidders, came in with detailed plans. Some more detailed than others, but they were detailed plans. Those who didn't get chosen did not get a chance to come back to you and say, well, wait a minute, I think maybe we could do it this way. It'd be nice if they could do that, but you didn't give that opportunity. Please think about your vote carefully. My proposal for this piece of land would be for the community of Lowell. Put something there that can be used by the entire community, or maybe even people from other areas, hopefully people from all over. Make park space, retail space, hotel space, a farmer's market stand, event space. Make it acceptable, accessible to the community, not just the chosen few. High-density housing, even if you throw in a couple retail space, is not appropriate for that sliver of land. Why are we selling off this tiny piece of land for just a few people to use?
Thank you.
I live at 215 West Main. Two bits of housekeeping. Two weeks ago, I sent a letter that had an error, I didn't check my fax, about the city approaching other bidders. I shouldn't have made that statement. I should have checked my fax better, and I apologize about that. Second of all, I recently delivered a letter from Jan Quiggle to Sue. She will live in the shadow of this building, and I hope that letter gets read tonight soon. I'd like to say that this lot, I don't know if any of you have been to the lot on the weekends, but it is full. If we're, if we're thinking about additional parking, we're kidding ourselves. Before you vote on this, if you have any question, please drive by that parking lot on the weekends, Thursday nights, it is full, okay? Next, green space is important. Why, why not make this a park, a gazebo, a picnic shelter like Rockford, which is a real draw? Doesn't our marijuana, extra money cover your needs financially? I don't really know what the reason is for this decision, it seems like it's money, but I think this is not a good sale for this. The sound engineer for the concerts told me that the echo from a tall building will be distracting for the Thursday night concerts, so please check with him. I don't know his name, but the concerts are gonna have a very bad echo from a tall building there. Riverside Drive traffic, are the residents, we've talked with a number of the residents, Perry's not here, are those residents gonna tolerate all the additional traffic? And I see speeders go down Riverside Drive all the time. Are they gonna tolerate 12, 17 more cars? The height variance, I don't understand why six stories, why this variance is even being considered. I have a two-story building, can I put on two more stories just like that? Is that okay? I don't understand why you even would consider six stories. I don't understand the tax abatements, but I'll talk about that more in a little bit. Okay, I read Copper Rock's proposal. They definitely said they needed brownfield, TIF, and Act 381 work plans. And I'm not smart on this, but it is using local school property tax dollars to pay for the demolition, the asbestos, the construction. And as I read the document about these plans, they all require local, the MEDC requires reimbursement of costs using state school taxes for both the non-environmental activities and the environmental, all the asbestos in it. And then sometimes, and I'm reading this verbatim, sometimes only local taxes are used to reimburse for the eligible activities, and that's up to the local taxing bodies. So, I don't know if you understand this, I don't, but that should be considered. What are they, what are they asking for? How much school tax money will be requested? I like all the proposals, but for instance, Greg's proposal for the inn was 150,000 cash, no tax money was needed. It would bring diversity. Every week, we would have new people coming to the inn, shopping in my business, shopping in the other businesses, giving us diversity. I don't understand 12 or 17 people that are gonna visit my shop once a year. The Copper Rock proposal, what I read, was quite vague, up to 17 units, up to six stories. All the other proposals were very defined. What are you voting on? I'm not sure, this is five stories, that's, do you know what you're voting on, and how much city money is needed to do this? Do you know? I don't. And, but, and the issues for like a three-story building are way different, and the money needed versus a six-story building, right? Three stories, six stories, double the people, double the parking lots needed. Again, how much taxpayer money is needed here? It should be, we should know. And I agree with Beryl, I think all, if this, if this is voted on, then all the other proposals should be allowed to present. I presented something, there were all the proposals, but if we're gonna entertain changes, I'd like to change too, okay? Next, as I studied the Copper Rock sketches, there are very few windows facing Riverside Drive. There are no windows on the north and the south ends of this building, and I don't know, you don't, you're not showing Riverside Drive here. Is it still no windows on the north and south? If it is, I frankly think that's gonna look like something like a missile silo or something. This is beautiful, but picture that from Riverside Drive, it's gonna look like a concrete wall.
That elevation is Riverside Drive, that's looking at it from Riverside.
This is from Riverside Drive?
Yes.
Okay, and the same windows on the other side? On the lakeside?
There'll be a lot of cars, because they're all units looking over, so-
Okay, how about on the ends of the building?
Well, the one end, it's hard to denote there, but the building actually steps in because of the exterior fire to tie in to the architecture of the area. And then it's fire-coated, so we can't put windows on, the building is fully fire-suppressed, so that's, that's actually a very small massing, because the building is not very big in footprint, so it's not very wide.
All right, I'm just, it struck me, what I saw from your proposal, the only windows were on Riverside. Okay, next, the ownership and management. Who owns this? Who, who is managing this? Do you have management experience? I'd kinda like to know that, I'm gonna be living as close to that as anyone else. Is this rentals? Is it condos? Is it apartments? What is the monthly rent expected range? Is it affordable, low-cost housing? I don't know, is it subsidized housing? Will there be association fees? Some of the rentals here, they have very high association fees, and that, I mean, hundreds of dollars there, I think we should know what the anticipated rent or cost of these units will be.
Do I have to answer that, or is that just rhetorical?
Let me finish, I've only got five minutes, so when you can do whatever. Next, we already talked about parking, right? But people have boats, they have RVs, they have motorcycles, all that. Where will those be parked? Should, something to think about. And then, is this part of the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority? It is, that is part of the DDA, so I don't know if DDA money is involved there or not, but that should be discussed. And lastly, I would like you to, I read an article, the editors from Lowell's First Look, a year or two, wrote a good article about better transparency with city council. And I didn't, I read the article, I sort of understood it, but I, I didn't think much of it. But now, as I've gone through these last few weeks with this building, and it seems to be a rushed decision, I really would ask the council-